Education meeting room. Um, welcome everybody. We hope you're surviving the first full five days of school. We're only day two into that week, but here we go. First, we'd like to welcome Rich Rudel to the team as our Director of Finance.
Good morning.
Everyone. Um, we, uh, Rich comes to us from Weston. Um, and if you weren't able to be here, see his appointment this summer, we are very happy to have him. He is, uh, very qualified and has jumped right in. We have kept him busy from day one, so, um, welcome and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Um, just quickly, I don't have a lot tonight, just a reminder, the, um, notice for the Cade Convention has been sent out several times. If anyone would like to attend, please let Nadine and I know so we can figure out who is going, um, and kind of what the delegation looks like if anyone goes to that. Um, you can reach out via email to either of us. And after that, I will pass it on to public comment this evening. Just a reminder as we start our year, if you give your name and your address for public comment, Mrs. T.I.
I have it written.
They should have it.
Um, my name's Stacy T.A. I live at 10 Clacks Lane. I am the Chair of the Council for Darien School Parents Special Education Subcommittee. I want to follow up regarding the feedback our committee shared with you about the 2018 Extended School Year in Darien Summer School Program and how that was reflected in the 2019 Summers Program. First, our committee pointed out that there were only, there was only a weekend between the end of the 2018 School Year and the beginning of the 2018 DSS and ESY because of numerous snow day cancellations. This resulted in increase of pressure on staff to prepare to welcome students for the summer. There were last-minute class cancellations that caused parents and staff to scramble to find placement for students which then affected scheduling of services. We know that staff worked hard around the clock to make this transition as smooth as possible. When planning for summer programs this year, DSS made it clear in communication with two parents that the beginning of DSS classes could be affected by snow days. In other words, if the school year ended later than expected, the start of the summer school classes could be delayed as well. While there was no need for a delay this year because of the mild winter, we applaud this change. Second, there were many last-minute classes, uh, cancellations of DSS classes in 2018 due to low enrollment. Since some children with special needs take classes to supplement ESY, sometimes as part of an IEP to work on a specific goal or goals, there was a lot of last-minute scrambling to find alternative appropriate classes. In contrast, this year, DSS and special education staff worked closely together to keep an eye on their class enrollments so it looked, so if it looked like a class might cancel, they could come up with a plan for students. Finally, the only item we heard from parents that was an issue this year was busing, but even that worked itself out in a couple of days. As a committee, we would like to acknowledge and thank the work of the administration and special education staff to build on our feedback. It's an example of parent and school partnership at its best. The energy at summer school is light, happy, and fun. The front steps of the high school is filled with smiling staff that is excited to greet their students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. T.I.
Welcome to New Faces and welcome back to everybody else. Um, my name is Kathryn Prokowski. I'm at 152 Old Kings Highway North. Got it?
I'm sure we do.
Okay. Um, if I'm flustered, it's because my husband just texted me, "Where is the social studies vocabulary?" Um, later this evening, you'll be hearing a presentation on ESY and Darien Summer School. I'm here tonight to share some perspective with you on that subject. As a parent, I have had much experience with extended school year programs here in Darien. I have a child who has qualified for ESY for 10 years due to the nature and severity of her disability. As such, I have had many years to watch the program and the procedures and planning around it evolve. Also, I participated on the Extended School Year Work Group in 2013 under the guidance of John Veer. If you recall, at that time, our district was deemed non-compliant in that area. I worked in concert with other parents, district administration, and staff to produce a topic brief and list of FAQs to guide in correctly identifying children who qualified for ESY. Additionally, I have served in multiple roles on CDSP, including both a special education representative at the school level and Chair of the Special Education Subcommittee, which gives me exposure to other parents who have children receiving summer services. I'm speaking however, as an individual, not as a member of CDSP. The presentation that you're about to hear, and I did have a chance to review before I got here, it's going to give you a limited look back at the history of ESY. It will provide you with some measurement of success. However, unless you have a child receiving ESY services, you may not be able to appreciate the quality of the program as it stands. Our district in the past did not identify children who qualified for ESY until much later than April. Parents often did not receive their children's schedules until the week before the program started. This made the district non-compliant, but it also gave very little time for thoughtful hiring and preparation. Special education teachers need time to prepare materials for the summer teachers that will help them to address specific goals. The receiving teacher needs time to prepare for the new students. Appropriate hiring of teachers and paraprofessionals who have backgrounds to educate the varying cohort of students each summer needs to be done. So there may be a repeat of kids who are going, but their needs are always changing. This is not a plug-and-play procedure. Extended School Year is designed by its very nature to be individualized and students' programs and groupings need to be individualized as well. We often hear at Board of Ed meetings about hand scheduling that needs to be done at the middle school and high school level.
Mrs. Prokowski, you're reaching time, so if you wanna...
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
I rehearsed it much shorter. Um, at ESY, all pupils require, all pupils require handheld, uh, scheduling. Further, I'd like to point out that the schedules that are done by the SES facilitators and special education department hats, that they are the ones that do the scheduling. There's been a lot of discussion around the added, uh, the value of adding these positions. This is one area that clearly benefits from the presence of the work at the building level. And I'll just truncate the rest of it because Tara's looking at me. I'm just going to tell you that from my perspective, looking at through the 10 years, I am, we are looking at apples and oranges from the beginning to the end. You can spend the same amount of money and if it's not matched well and thought out and, and all the pieces are in the right place, you do not get the same results. And this is, the kids that qualify for these programs are qualifying because they need this instruction for either recruitment or regression. It's very important not to waste their time in the summer, and we don't waste their time in the summer. They walk out happy, and I think that has a lot to do with the staff. Thank you very much.
And if you want to send a full version of your, um, comments, I'll send them out to the board if you didn't get to finish. Thank you. Any other public comment? Mrs. Parent.
Hello, everybody. I'm Sarah Parent, 227 Hallow Tree Ridge Road. I just wanted to very briefly thank and acknowledge Dr. Adley for an excellent start to our school year. We have heard nothing but positive glowing comments from what you've done and the, your visibility in the, in the community, you know, the schools is acknowledged by parents, by staff, by administrators, by everybody. So thank you for a great start.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? Well, that's a great lead-in to the superintendent's report. Top spot, Dr. Adley.
Thank you very much. Thank you, and it was certainly an, uh, an excellent week of full school. We had a full week last week, and so it was wonderful, um, to see the energy around the place. And kids hit the platform running, have assimilated tremendously well, as have all the staff. And, uh, all the new staff are also doing very well and settling into the Darien way. Uh, thank you to the community and to our, uh, our parents in particular. Having the opportunity to skate around the, all the open houses, uh, last Thursday night. I got the full sense of parking, uh, and why you would pay for a space. But it was wonderful to see that literally the community come to a standstill, uh, with the amount of parents and the participation. And I will tell you that that is very, very encouraging and uplifting, uh, for the staff members, uh, to see so many people there and to see the energy. And it was particularly noticeable to see, I may say, the PTOs, uh, who were showing their wares and selling their wares and everything in between, right? Uh, but thank you, and, um, just wonderful to see such a successful evening. Uh, enrollment on the first day was, uh, down 25 students, so that's still pretty good with nearly 100% accuracy really from, uh, 4,727 students. Uh, projected was 4,752. Uh, I also was gonna welcome Richard officially, so welcome again. Uh, Dr. Cadorne, I mentioned at the last Board Meeting, he is the, uh, new Commissioner of Education in the State of Connecticut, and he will be here on October 22nd. Uh, so we will be arranging some visits to the school, uh, on October 27th, and I'm sure we can solicit some, uh, parents to help out with that. But he will be visiting our school, so we look forward to that. And I just received a request today of some of our students could play at an event that is happening on the evening of the October 22nd. Board members, don't get excited because that's a board meeting, uh, so it's not here. But there is a, an educational leadership forum being held by UConn, uh, in the town that evening, and our, our students have been invited to, uh, participate on that. So, uh, we look forward to those, a couple of events. Uh, S-BAC scores have been received and, uh, just released today. Uh, they, they were excellent by comparison over the previous years. Dr. De Silva has already convened the Assessment Committee, which will, you know, you'll hear back here, a report on the testing, but, uh, ELA was the 84.4 for the percentage of students meeting or exceeding the target, and MATH was 84.7. I will say that they're two, two great scores. Growth targets were also very impressive, but I think it's important that you get a context to those in a presentation format. So, again, well done to our students, well done to our staff members and, and parents and community members. I just received notice that, uh, the high school has nine national merit semifinalists. We can't name them or congratulate them, um, because it's embargoed until tomorrow. But I thought that would be, uh, useful information. I will pass on that we are actively looking at the possibility of hosting the Turkey Bowl, uh, on campus. A decision on that has not been made, uh, so we, we are meeting with various constituents who are police force first, uh, emergency response, so on and so forth, to see how we, if, if and when we can do that, uh, but we are looking at that possibility. Looks like we've just, uh, secured a finalist for our fifth grade opening at home, so, uh, that's the last position per se, at least certified position at this point to be, to be filled. And, uh, the district is looking at the, the schedule for when the work will commence about our, our track, uh, cross-country track, and, uh, I believe that was to take place. So we'll, we'll sort of revisit it in that schedule. Middle, uh, the open houses are around the corner, so that's, uh, Thursday evening, and then, uh, next, next Tuesday, uh, next Monday. And the high school is Thursday, September 19th, and next Board Meeting is September 24th. And thank you to the parents who actually saw me at open houses and said a, a quick hello, but it's very nice. Thank you.
We'll move on. Any Board Committee reports this evening? Oh, sorry, skipped from minutes. They're very exciting. I'm sorry I skipped them. Um, it's requested that the Board approve the following minutes. Minutes of the special meeting and executive session held on August 27th, 2019. Mrs. McNamara and Mr. Burke, all in favor. That is, can you guys keep them up because I don't think we have everyone? That's McNamara, McCammon, Burke, Brown, and Danine. Any abstaining? That is Mrs. Ritchie and Mr. Maroni. And then minutes of the regular meeting on August 27th, 2019. May I have a motion to approve? Mr. Burke, you're quick on the draw tonight, Mr. Burke. And Mrs. McNamara, all in favor. And that is McNamara, McCammon, Burke, Brown, Danine, and any abstaining? Mrs. Ritchie and Mr. Maroni. Thank you all. And now we will move on to the Board Committee Reports. Any Board Committee reports? So, Mrs. Ritchie.
Just real quick, Budget Committee will meet on the morning of September 24th. This will be our first meeting with Rich. Um, we'll probably go over procedures and meeting schedule, which will probably be more frequent than we've had in the past, but I'll have more of an update after we meet on the 24th.
Thank you. Any other Board Committee reports this evening? Mr. Danine.
Yeah, it's rich. Building Committee meeting continues to be, uh, almost weekly. Good progress continues to be made. Uh, we had our first of four schematic design meetings last week, um, and we're also prepping for a meeting at the state to present the, uh, updated building head specs on September 18th.
Thank you very much. Any other committee reports this evening? Seeing none. Um, we'll move on to presentations and discussion, beginning with further discussion and possible action on the proposed educational specifications for the new Oxford School. Dr. Adley.
So we did do the presentation, uh, at the last Board Meeting. Um, there was a couple of, well, there's one update in particular, was the school psychologist's office was increased from one to two, so we made that change. Uh, any other changes to the, at the thicket ending that you received, um, was minor in nature and it was more format in nature just to do the table of contents and update that. Uh, we will not be sending like a, a red, redacted, underlying version to the state. We will complete it, um, and then present that. So, uh, before the Board's evening is, is the consideration to approve those because in order to go to the state, we need the, the Board's approval. I don't believe I've received, uh, questions, uh, about it. I don't know.
Neither did I. I didn't receive anything.
No.
So any Board comments or questions?
Just curious, um, once we finalize this, will this be posted on the Oxford Building Committee page?
Sure.
With the caveat, though, that any other change also will come back to the Board. So maybe every iteration will go on, but we can talk to the Building Committee about that. Any other Board comments or questions? Seeing none, and I do know we had a pretty lengthy discussion and asked people to send in, so it seems like everybody's good with what we have. May I have a motion to approve the proposed educational specification changes for the new Oxford School? Mrs. McCammon, a second. Mrs. McNamara, all in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you, everybody, and, um, Duke, good luck and good new marching orders to the Building Committee. Thank you, Dr. Adley.
Thank you.
Um, we will move on to the report on summer school and the ESY programs from 2019. Who is this? Um, Mrs. Klein. We'll start with you before Mrs. Stanton and Mrs. Schwartz and Mrs. Straight.
So if we could just begin, thank you for the opportunity. We look forward to this time to report. Caitlin's here, um, Sheera's here, as well as the clicker is here, and Mark Powers. Um, also, just to thank the parents for their generous comments earlier, they actually can give some of my time back to them since they were able to share, um, the history of what we've done over the last five years. But I just wanted to acknowledge before Mark and Caitlin present how greatly we appreciate all their work and coordination with Sheera Schwartz. Um, it was seamless in terms of making sure that we knew course, course offerings for students as per IEP recommendations, the timelines that you all adhere to, and the communication between general education and special education to make, you know, a seamless, um, summer transition. So thank you as well. And we look forward to hearing all about your outcomes this summer.
Thank you. Excuse me. And I'd like to start by thanking, um, Dr. Adley, the Board of Education, the, uh, Central Office and Building Administration, as well as the ESY and DSS staff for helping make 2019 another successful year for Darien Summer School. We'll start with a brief overview of the program. So Darien Summer School is a comprehensive, diversified, learner-centered, uh, program. It's available to students pre-K through 12, uh, mostly in Darien, but we also have students coming to us from all over Fairfield County, uh, Westchester, uh, New York City, and actually the student who traveled the furthest this year came to us from San Francisco, California, which was kind of cool. Um, this year we had 227 offerings. Um, we have academic classes which students can take for credit recovery, uh, to improve their grade, um, as well as just for enrichment, and we also have a variety of athletic, art, uh, music, and theater programs between the three sites. Uh, the program is a five-week program this year, running from June 24th through, uh, July 26th. The majority of the classes run from 8:30 to 10:30 and 10:30 to 12:30, but we do have some, uh, afternoon classes which run from 12:30 to 3:30, and we also have, um, weekly sport camps that run, uh, various times throughout the evening. Uh, we again had three levels of transition programs, uh, beginning with the PALS program at Tokonik. It's a five-week program designed to promote kindergarten readiness. Um, at the middle school, we had the Middle Sex Jump Start Program available to fifth graders at all five of our schools. Um, it's designed to familiarize students with the building, um, get them used to looking at their schedule, and probably most importantly, helping them to learn to, uh, open their lockers for the first day of school. Um, and then similarly, at the High School 101, which we ran for the second year in a row, um, this takes place at Darien High School, and it's designed to get the students used to the larger campus, uh, rotating schedule, and also we have opportunities for them to learn more about the electives that are offered, as well as the, um, volunteer opportunities and clubs that take place at Darien High School. Uh, this year, the, actually, if, I'll take a step back. I missed a slide. So in the right-hand corner, you'll notice, um, we have some of our guys, they're dressed up. Uh, to add a little excitement to Darien Summer School this year, we had Fun Fridays, um, and these guys are dressed up in some of their Hawaiian gear. Um, we had different themes each Friday. Um, some of the different themes we, um, offered were, uh, Red, White, and Blue, Hawaiian Friday, we had Wear Your Favorite Sports Team Jersey, as well as School Spirit Day. Um, this year we had 1,503 students enrolled in Darien Summer School, and to give it some perspective, um, during the normal year at Darien High School where the majority of our classes take place, uh, we have a total of 1,412 students. So it just kind of gives you an idea of how many students we kind of squeezed into that building over the summer, which is kind of nice. Uh, many of these students are enrolled in multiple classes. Uh, this year we offered a, uh, a total of 15 new classes. Um, some of the more popular ones were the Harry Potter Camp, the Mixed Up Fitness, and Dr. Seuss Fun.
All right. So we employed over 125 staff members, and those certified teachers, athletic coaches, and DHS student assistants worked with us in three different buildings and over, uh, various sports fields. That number does not include our school nurses and our campus monitors, and it also does not include the six independent contractors that we work with who provide specialty programming. So those include things like camp invention, mad science, Ivy Bound test prep, and so This year, our 1,503 students enrolled in 2,374 classes. That number was up slightly from last year. The parent feedback was extremely positive again this year. 96% of the parents who responded to our end-of-the-season survey said that they would likely recommend DSS to a friend, and I included some of the parent comments on the screen here. The parents really appreciate how organized the program is, the classes that we offer, the teachers who work in the program. Um, and we had several comments on the new website and registration system that we put in place this year. And this is just a screenshot of one of the sections of the homepage. Uh, our, we worked with the Web Solutions Company to redesign and rework our entire website. It was quite the endeavor, so I wanted to thank the Central Office staff for all of their support in that. We really love our new website. We think that it provides such an ease for parents to search for their classes, they're able to narrow down by grade or by topic or both. Uh, we also have an advanced search capability now, and it is mobile device friendly, which is huge. It was not before. Looking forward, uh, we are going to be doing a review of our independent contractors. Mark and I typically do a deep dive into all of the different programs and classes that we offer, so we'll be working with those six independent contractors on their program structure, making sure that the quality is to our high DSS standard. Um, and then I'm also looking into potentially adding one more independent contractor who has a specialty in the STEM field, specifically coding and programming. Um, and then potential new classes that are taught by our teachers. We always ask our teachers if they would like to come on board, what classes they would like to offer. Uh, I know that parents have specifically asked for more STEM classes and also more art classes. We also offer a campus guide service. Uh, we employ high school students who are really familiar with our building to help the younger students move around. It can be a little overwhelming for the younger students. So that's a great service that we have. In the past, that registration has happened in person the first few days of summer school, and I'd really like to move that to an online registration ahead of time so that we can become an even more organized system. And thank you again. Any questions?
Any Board comments or questions? Mr. Burke.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. Can you tell me what the numbers are in terms of the, the kids who avail themselves of the Middle Sex and the High School, uh, Jump Start classes? I think that's a fascinating program.
I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head. Um, we run two sections. There's an 8:30 and a 12:30. We usually have about 30 to 40 in each of those sections.
And that does tend to fill each year.
Thank you.
Mrs. McNamara?
Uh, yes. Thank you so much for the presentation. Staying on the enrollment, uh, do you have the numbers from last year versus 1,503 this year?
It was also low 1,500s. It was within probably 30 students.
And is that a number you like? Would you like, any comments on that number?
We always hope to have more students each year, um, but in fact, we're down, you know, percentage-wise, a few, uh, students, you know. Again, we'd like to have that be a higher number next year, but...
Okay. And then are there any steps that you're thinking of for 2020 then to increase that number?
We've already been talking about different ways to market or increase our marketing to hopefully put us out there even more so. Again, the majority of the families who come to DSS are from, uh, Darien and Fairfield County, but we're even looking to kind of broaden that search because we do have families who come to us from New Haven Counties and Hartford County even.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Were our revenue projections on target?
So that's something that Mr. Feeney's usually handled, and I don't know if...
You may, you may want to start taking an interest in that.
Uh, so I, unfortunately, only being here five days, um, I don't have that figure yet, but I could certainly get...
Sure. If you could just follow up with one more.
Sure.
Um, the other thing we heard mentioned that it was much improved, but still an issue. Can you talk a little bit about transportation and/or, um, what we learned this year to make? Next year, we hope we have the same comments to say that it was improved. I mean, no issue's great, but I like improvements each year. Can you talk a little bit about transportation?
So I think, if I may, I think Caitlin and Mark are off the hook on transportation, but we'll speak to it. I think it's our special transportation, and we're going to speak to our successes and what we're planning in the future and how we remedy it.
Okay. Mrs. McNamara?
Um, thank you for the comments about the program and highlighting the, the transition programs. I know those are incredibly popular. My question is more for the administration. Have you thought of, um, what is covered during that class? And for those students who are not enrolled in this program, do you incorporate those same skills as these students move into the high school, moving into middle school? I don't necessarily need an answer, but just to make sure, if they can't take that program, are we still getting those skills and that knowledge to them in another way when school starts?
I think Dr. Silver probably better...
That would be a Susie.
It's actually a conversation that, um, Ms. Somers and I have begun to have about what the transition plan looks like for our students entering in. In fact, um, she's considered this for a number of years, and so hopefully that's something that we can bring to the Board of Education, um, sooner than later.
Okay. But we have a whole year, so that's great. Thank you. Any other Board comments or questions? Well, thank you all for your work this summer and, um, for providing a great experience to the 1,500 kids who are able to avail themselves of it. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Caitlin. Thank you very much.
Uh, we will move on to the presentation and discussion of the Board ma, uh, sorry, Report on Summer School, ESY.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I can read. I don't know.
No, that's a great introduction. Actually, um, just to go back, um, and what would be helpful in, in addition to what Kathryn and Stacy said earlier, you know, it's one of the first times that seven schools get to get together, you know, for, for a proper period of time in the summer. We have five elementary schools, Middle Sex, and DHS students all together, a chance that staff gets to be together. You know, staff very often are in silos. You've got elementary school, middle school, and high school, and this is an opportunity for them to get together and work collaboratively and collectively, both clinicians, special education teachers, and general education teachers. So it really is an authentic way to really, it may not be as far as San Francisco, obviously, but, but really the closest thing to it. So it's an exciting time. So, um, Laura, Laura Straighton, our ELP Director, Scott McCarthy, our Secondary Program Director, um, Kristin O'Reilly, our Chairperson in the high school, um, and for part of the time it was, Mary Scalise, um, has also worked with us, of really putting together a proper was Mary Scalise, also worked with us, of really putting together a proper program that really coordinates all efforts. So under the auspices of Shira, who loves this program and embraces it, puts together coordinates and really does start planning in September, and will speak to it, the Sess facilitators really should be commenting how they start to work alongside her as early as September to make sure that children are grouped accordingly, that goals are implemented with fidelity. And I know she was excited about speaking about it, so I'll let her know how this all comes together with all our seven schools. Thanks, Shira.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to present after what was really a wonderful, fun-filled summer. And just on a personal note, again, to thank everybody for the opportunity to be the onsite administrator. It's just, it's such a joy to be with these kids every summer for the past three summers. And when I get to go to PPT meetings and I get to walk the buildings, I get to know every kid just a little bit more and on just more of a personal level. So just professionally, it's beneficial for me. So thank you again, and I hope to keep doing this in the future. So, just to orient folks to Darien and all ESY programs, all public school districts are required by law to provide extended school-year services to identified students with IEPs. And the responsibility of each child planning placement team is to come up with an individualized program for the summer that works on goals and objectives and skills that children need in order to, for lack of a better term, hit the ground running in September, so that they don't lose any skills, and so that they can really pick up right when they're left off in June. And so, you know, we take into account the nature of severity and severity of the disability, what the student needs in order to work towards independence. And you hear us say regression and recruitment quite a bit. Everybody seems to forget the first two, but certainly, there's a focus on ensuring that regression doesn't happen and that rate of recruitment is appropriate. So as in the past, we held our program at the high school from June 24th until July 26th, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 to 12:30. Students come for all or part of the day to receive services. And certainly, there are students who participate in Darien Summer School classes, either because their parents have enrolled them in that class and/or because their PPT planning placement team has made a recommendation that a certain Darien Summer School class would further support their specialized work over the summer. At Tokenik, the program ran from June 24th until July 25th, Monday through Thursday, from 8:00 to 11:45 in the morning. And so each year, we really do focus on continuous improvement and growth in all of our goal areas. And really, what those pertain to are communication with families, early and strategic program planning, and using a real data-informed and data-driven way to make sure that our coordination is spot-on, our deployment of resources is efficient, and as it should be, to meet the needs of students. And Mrs. Ackman, I promise I will answer your question about transportation, because we strive for continued improvement in transportation. And one particular highlight that I think was really successful, and Shirley spoke to it, and I think some of our parents spoke to it a little bit, we created a system by which Darien Summer School and the Special Education Department could separately track PPT-based recommendations for Darien Summer School classes. So whenever one of our teams made a recommendation for a reading class that was run by Darien Summer School, we were in constant communication with Mark, with Vicki, and with Caitlin on what the enrollment looked like. We were getting regular, almost weekly, updates as we were getting closer. We're six kids off on this class, we're two kids off on this class, you know, this class really might close, so that we could go to Plan B. And certainly, elementary school teams were instructed to have a Plan B and a Plan C this year, in terms of those recommendations, just in case.
Blessings.
Blessings. So this is our pretty timeline graphic that really does sort of depict what it is that we do, starting in September. In September, we start our planning by debriefing the previous year and really digging into where we, what we did well and what we could improve upon. We get feedback from our administrative support staff, both at Central Office and the administrative support staff that work at the high school or at Tokenik with us, as well as from the staff who work with kids all year long, and of course, from our families. This past year, I'm pleased to say that all of our timelines moved up by about a week. So we were able to make PPT decisions earlier this year and mail schedules out to families at least a week earlier. And likewise, we hired staff earlier. Communication with our transportation vendor was also somewhat earlier, but mostly around the same spot. So this really is a year-long process. There's a lot of moving pieces, and as Mrs. Burkowski mentioned, this really is a hand-scheduling one-on-one. We sit with big grids and sort of agonize over the process with a lot of detail. And it really is a team effort, with all the folks Shirley mentioned. So year over year, our recommendations and our actual enrollment in ESY has remained stable. You know, it is an individualized program, so we do tend to see some variability based on the needs of students, based on our population any given year, but by and large, the enrollment has remained the same. There was an increase in the ELP this year, and that was due to the 2019 ELP overall enrollment having gone up. That said, I'm really proud of some additional opportunities for efficiency that we were able to find this year. You know, the number of staff, certified and non-certified, did largely stay the same, but we were able to slim down by a couple, while also maintaining a level of quality and the logistics that we need in order to pull off the program with success. So I copied Caitlin's slide just a little bit, and I included some quotes from our end-of-program survey, which went out to families. As in years past, the majority of our families reported positive experiences with our coordination, our logistics, the implementation. And this year, we measured the overall culture and climate of our program. We really wanted to make sure that both families and students felt really good about the work that they were doing and the experience that they were having. So do our smiling faces on those front steps of Darien High School make a difference? And it sounds like they do. So that's great. So truly, families spoke to the flexibility, they spoke to the caliber of our staff, they spoke to just overall, the positive experiences that they had. And with respect to transportation, what I will speak to, I'll go a little bit backwards. Transportation usually shakes out by Wednesday or Thursday of the first week. And that was true of this year as well. So Monday, Tuesday, a little bit of Wednesday can have some bumps as we sort out the routes and the timing, but usually by Wednesday or Thursday, we're pretty smooth sailing. However, bearing in mind some of the challenges that we have had over the past few years with regard to transportation, I'm pleased to share that Central Office will be taking over the route design for the extended school-year specialized transportation. So that means that somebody here will be working on designing efficient routes, along with the times for pickups and drop-offs, and will be then communicating that design to the vendor, and the vendor will then execute on that, on that design. Going forward, and taking into account the feedback we received from families and certainly also from staff, we're looking forward to really providing an extra level of knowledge and understanding for families and for staff at PPT meetings about Darien Summer School classes. We are so fortunate that ESY gets to partner with Darien Summer School, because we get to provide children with IEPs with access to their general education peers by having DSS in the same location as ESY. So we want to make sure that everyone at our PPT meetings understands why we're recommending a specific Darien Summer School class as part of a child's ESY program. And we've certainly started to do that work, but we want to, we want to build upon that. Also, in terms of logistics, Shirley will tell you that I am a tech girl. We are looking to explore an online enrollment scheduling and attendance system for extended school year. We want to give families an opportunity to put in all their particular information, let us know when kids are being absent, instead of feeling like they need to make a bunch of phone calls. We are certainly looking forward to eliminating paper schedules, if that's at all possible, and likewise, facilitating much more efficient communication to families by having blasts and listservs and things like that. Thank you. Happy to take any questions.
Any board comments or questions? Mr. Maroney? Sorry, I looked at you and said that.
You kind of did a Patrick Mahomes there.
I did. I didn't drink coffee then.
Thank you for the presentation, and kudos to your work this year, I think, from the parents' feedback. Just a quick question, and I applaud you for having the goals. I love to see the goals. Do you think that having the online registration will help facilitate even more to get the information out to the parents sooner? Because you mentioned that this year, you were out a week earlier than in years past. Will it be around the same time, or you think, you anticipate even being more, more better, better prepared and having that information even sooner?
I think the timeline that we're working with right now, which is late April, early May, for getting the information out to families, seems to work for everybody. You know, the PPT meetings happen earlier, so parents know what to plan for in terms of camp and other opportunities they might be thinking about, but then getting the actual schedule around late April, early May, I think, works. To the extent that we can make it earlier, we certainly will. It's a big Tetris of, you know, 200 and some odd kids that we're working with. So yeah, it's entirely possible that we could.
Mr. Dineen?
You may not have the data, which is fine, but I think as we go forward, just so we have a visual, do you have an idea as to the number of folks that use the transportation versus those that don't? I know, having been part of this program, which is fantastic, for many years, we choose not to use the transportation. So, you know, there is an option. It may come with transportation, depending on the student's needs, but just to see that. And is there anything specific that you need from us, from a transportation or a logistics standpoint? Just, you know, make sure you bring that up.
So in terms of percentage of students who access specialized transportation for ESY, the number's quite small, to be honest. And I worked with Mark and with Caitlin to reroute the traffic flow at Darien High School to make sure that everybody is safe and is dropped off without cars whizzing past them and in designated areas. So I think that was really helpful. In terms of transportation, we're just really grateful that we have somebody at the Central Office now who can design routes and who has a deep knowledge and understanding of how to design those routes with efficiency and with students' needs in mind. This is somebody who knows all of our kids. She works with us during the school year on specialized transportation, so she really has a keen understanding of, you know, who can be on the bus for a certain period of time and who can't, and how can we do that seamlessly. So that's, that was at the top of my wish list, so thank you.
So to follow up on that, we keep hearing it's at Central Office. Am I assuming it's in the finance department? I mean, where in the mysterious Central Office is it?
Well, Rich has only been here a few days, so we're not going to get to him yet. But let's talk in a couple of months and see what we can do. But just to give you background, just one piece that we did. So prior to this summer, one of the vendors we used, they had someone who was mapping and scheduling. And just so you know, one of the most challenging areas is transportation. Nobody wants to do transportation. But one of the areas was, this person did it for several years and was familiar. That person left the vendor that we were using. So a new person came in and with all good intentions, tried to make sense out of all these streets. You can't do it. So that's what, that's what happened. That was the lag. So we realized we do have someone who helps, it's one of our suburban drivers, just so you know, that's the person at Central Office, who knows, who does a lot of our mapping and does that, and knows the students. And it's very different when you work by schools. So if you're working in communities, you're trying to map out your bus routes and know it, it's different than if you ask a vendor who's never done it for less than 11 hours. So she'll be doing it. So her name is, so it's Kayla, just so you know it is. The other alternative, they were going to use an off-site person. In the past, this vendor uses an off-site person electronically. They kind of do it electronically. They look at maps and they can map it out, and they can do everything that makes sense, and it never works. It just doesn't. Because of wait times, because of order of kids, because some kids need last on first off, so we know we have the human part to it right now. It worked. She's done all our busing for the start of the school year, so everything's been working. We know why. So she's been doing our routes for the fall also. So that's the person who's going to be helping us. And it does come, Marge, is that through the business office and Steve? Rich? So it is yours. Thank you.
Mrs. McHammert?
Just staying on the topic of transportation, about what percentage of students avail themselves of transportation, of your 306?
I don't have the number off the top of my head, but it's very, it's really small. How many would you say?
I don't want, I've learned never to guess. Never guess.
Yeah, I don't want to guess.
Never to guess. I mean, we can run the numbers, but some of the reason why parents don't opt to use it is, they have other plans after. You know, they have other activities they go to. But we certainly could look, we've got 239 students, that's not including our ELP students. We can look at both, because that's another, coming close to 300.
So it's not a lot of kids that we're trying to move around?
No.
I will say, the times that I dropped off, which were many, were incredibly smooth and well-organized.
Thank you. It's because I stand in the middle of the road. Is that right?
Mrs. McCann?
I want to just comment briefly on transportation. I do appreciate that it's very complex and that the Central Office works really hard. Just want to continue to emphasize that, you know, it's all, I only want to, I don't want to hear from any parent. I had to wait for an hour, because they had to go back and forth to get a nurse, and then... So I'm glad to hear you've made some improvements. I know that, I know that it's difficult, I get, it's one of those complex things. There's construction in the summer, but, you know, there are some kids who shouldn't be waiting for the bus for an hour either. So I just want to emphasize that. My, the other thing I wanted to speak to was, also, I think, I love that you have in there something about thinking about communication with parents and how to report absences. You know, we are so structured in how we do that during the school year, but in the summer, there isn't really a consistent process, and it can be really difficult to know how to communicate with the bus driver, with the paraprofessional, with the case provider, and with any sort of DSS class that you're taking. So I think that a standardized process that enables the parent to go to ideally just one place would really behoove the program.
Any other board comments or questions? So thank you for the report. I will say, I had the benefit of being at the high school lot and seeing all of your smiling faces, and I felt pretty welcome just walking through the school, so I'm sure the little people did. But I think certainly, from the visuals, it looked like everything was under control, and you all did a great job.
Yeah, I'm sure personally, that was probably my first introduction to this week, to the summer programs, the regular summer program and this program, and it was clear how passionate our staff was, how organized things were, and how much the kids were enjoying the actual experience. So thank you again.
Now, we will really move on to the presentation and discussion of the board master agenda for August 19th through January 2020. Dr. Adley?
So I would ask for the board's expertise in looking over this document. My colleagues have. We think we have sort of covered what is around the corner for us, but particularly as it relates to budget and other things, that I think you're discerning. I and experience would probably massage some of this a little bit, so if you wouldn't mind doing that, we can bring it to the next meeting, but it's asked before you, I'm not going to go through you at all, but...
Any board comments or questions? Because mine refuses to download. Deb?
Just as I reviewed it, I would speak to Rich on this. If you could look it over and just make sure that the dates match up for when you want to make your presentations to the board. And then, I kind of went through it roughly, and some of them were consistent with what we talked about, but if we're going to, we potentially might go to a monthly presentation to the board. Just make sure that...
We could do that, yes?
That corresponds with that.
That's a good suggestion. Thank you.
Any other board comments? Mrs. McCann?
I know traditionally, we do our enrollment report and projections in December, but if we're going to start with the five-year capital plan in November, I was wondering if maybe we could piggyback those two, because I think, you know, the basic capital is not impacted by enrollment, but anything we might do beyond basics potentially would be impacted by enrollment.
And so you would like to just...
Move the projected enrollment report back to November. November comes.
Okay. Is there any reason we can't do that?
Will they have, will have in October. Will you have it early October?
Okay, we'll check into that, okay?
How about this? If there's any problems with this, I don't know, but until then, we can roll it back in meeting. It's fine. Budget. We always end up needing a need to add in an extra, maybe do that later, meeting. And I know last year, we actually benefited from an extra meeting in there. It gave time for the RTM committees to get back to us. So do we feel like we're sufficiently covered? We've got the 4th. We start right back for snow. I'm sorry, and then the 11th in case of snow. Then we turn around on the 14th, we have another meeting, and then we have a break till the 28th. And I find that typically, we add a meeting in there. Does the board want to do that now, or do we want to wait and see the need?
Are you talking about what's in red, the January special board meeting, just without a date?
No, that is, I'm talking about, do we want to add in? Last year, we actually added in another meeting. No, no, it was an actual full board meeting. We met three times. And we don't need to, we can wait and see if we think we need it, but we actually added in another meeting. I found it useful, given the information that we were processing, especially... I found it useful, given the information that we were processing, especially the conversation around psychologists. It was, it was a good way to get a lot of public feedback. We don't need to do it now. We can always call a special meeting. But I'm just putting it out there that everyone should watch their calendars and be aware of it. If they don't want to add in now, then a special meeting might be called for.
It could be a special meeting.
Yeah, but I'm just, do we want to add another budget in now? Or are you comfortable? Add it as needed?
So you're suggesting maybe on the 21st, we add a meeting?
We don't, we don't need to do it now. I just want you thinking of it as we look at this agenda, and it would be around budget initiatives. I see Mrs., everyone. All right, so we're going to leave it aware of. And as we go through the Board Master Agenda and we take another review, we'll need it. Everyone will have it on their brains. Any other comments or questions on the Master Agenda? Mr. Maroni?
Yeah, I'm looking at the 14th and the 28th, and I'm seeing meeting with Board of Finance, RTM, and budget, Finance and Budget and Education on both dates. Are we meeting with them both times?
You're looking at which calendar right now?
On the 14th, it says meeting with the...
Sorry, mine's not downloading right now.
Meeting with Board of Finance, RTM, and on the 28th, it says meeting with Board of Finance and RTM.
I think we leave it out there for them because we give them time to schedule.
But are we going to hear formal comments at both of them or one of them?
They typically end up picking one, but I know last time, like Mr. Zhagratzky was traveling, so he asked to come to the next. We usually tighten that up as we get closer.
Because I think, because I think the dilemma for us is that if they only give comments at the 28th, we don't have time to discuss those comments and verbalize them in a public forum. Because then we meet the 28th, and then it's the 4th is the public hearing, and then it's the 11th, and we have to, we have to adopt the budget then. So there's really not a lot of time.
Yeah, as you remember, we typically get a budget meeting in there, a budget and finance meeting in there to help with that. But we call that as needed as well.
Okay. Just, I think we have to clarify that for those committees of when they're expected and where we would like them to present their findings.
So we typically do that when the budget calendar comes up.
Okay.
Yeah. We contact them with a draft of the budget calendar and let them know in advance.
Okay.
But I hear you. We've gone back and forth whether they like to come early, whether they like to come later after full discussions. We've, it's kind of changed based on, I think, that December meeting and initiatives. So we will offer both to them and see what they can do. I think some years even, RTM has come one and Board of Finance has come the other when they feel like they're ready. Any other comments or questions? Okay. We will move on to discussion and possible action. On request from the Darien High School for delayed openings on October 16th, 2019 for the purpose of administering the PSAT exams, a delayed opening on April 14th, 2020 for the purpose of administering SAT exams, and a change for the May 8th, 2020 Professional Learning Community, PLCs, to May 15th, 2020, early dismissal. And I have a feeling if we'll look, that will coincide with prom, which is why we're being asked about it.
That would be correct. So Ellen couldn't be here tonight. She has a commitment over at DHS. And so what you'll notice is similar to last year, we made the adjustment for PSAT to be taken during the school week in order for students to get their booklets back. We do have the state mandated SAT, and preact is offered to sophomores as well. And so we're asking for two late arrivals on that day. And you would be correct, Ms. Akman, in that we are making the adjustment to the May PLC for the purpose of prom.
Yeah.
That is correct.
If not, we tend to lose a lot of students, just as a quick refresher, that afternoon anyway.
That is correct. And it's truly just a week apart, so there doesn't seem to be a reason not to. We do have the anticipated PSAT date for 2020. And we'll talk more about that likely late winter, early spring in terms of making any adjustments to the calendar. So we're not doing it next school year in September.
Any board comments or questions? Mrs. McHemus.
Could you just clarify what it is exactly you're looking to change? As I've read through it, what is it that you'd like to do on Wednesday, October 16th?
So we'd like that to be a late arrival for students that are, because all of those students that are not testing would need to come in later. On April 14th, we're also asking for a late arrival for students, freshmen, sophomores, and obviously seniors, or any sophomore that's not taking the pre-ACT. And then on the 15th, we're asking for an early dismissal. So we're changing it from the 8th to the 15th.
So on the 8th, it would be in the morning, so you're...
On the 8th, it'll actually be a full day for students. And on the 15th, it will be an early dismissal rather than a late arrival.
So the 8th becomes a regular school day?
That's correct.
And the 16th becomes an early dismissal?
And the 15th becomes, yes.
Did we, did we do this for the past school year where we had the late arrival for the testing days?
Yes, yes, we did.
Helps keep things quiet during testing.
It does. It does. And there's an adjusted schedule for students. We actually shared that last year. We didn't feel the need to share it this year, but if anyone needs to see that, there is an adjusted schedule that students will receive.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so may I have a motion on the request to remove, from Darien High School, to have a delayed opening October 16th, 2019 for the purpose of administering the PSAT exams, a delayed opening on April 14th, 2020 for the purpose of administering SAT exams, and a change to the May 8th, 2020 Professional Learning Community to May 15th, 2020, to an early dismissal. Mr. Brown? And a second, Mr. Burke? All in favor? Any opposed? Does one oppose, Mr. Maroni? Any abstaining? And the motion carries. Thank you all. And we will move on to action items and personnel items. Mrs. Simon.
So we continue to finish up our paraprofessional hiring. We did have a resignation late today of a SaaS facilitator at one of the elementary schools. It's already been posted, and we are hoping there are some good internal candidates as well as external.
Can I have a motion to approve the PAR dated September 10th, 2019?
Can I have a question? The reason that it's mostly pairs is because this is just as you're finishing the needs of students, you're understanding what the full hiring looks like.
We also had some very late resignations.
Okay. Specifically in that pool.
Just for clarification, the one resignation that you received today, is that on?
I will, I will get it on next time. I didn't have time to get it on this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so may I have a motion to approve the PAR dated September 10th, 2019? Mrs. Ritchie and Mr. Burke, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Is there any public comment this evening? I'm just going to take a moment of privilege and say we have our first game under the lights on Friday. That'll, this time it happens to be football, but it tends to be a community event. So we look forward to seeing as many people who could be at the high school and enjoy a lovely fall evening under the lights. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn? Mrs. Ritchie and Mr. Burke, all in favor? That is unanimous, and we are adjourned.